Well, dear, good evening. Thank you for joining us this evening for the November 16th, 2021, Monteserino City Council Regular Meeting. Before this meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few House rules to assist council members, staff, and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. Council members, your microphone is live, so please keep your microphones on mute until you wish to speak. For tonight's meeting, we are using Zoom to host the City Council Regular Meeting. At the bottom of the Zoom client, there are two icons, Chat and Raise Hand. Please use Chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a council member speaking. Please use Raise Hand to be recognized by the mayor and able to speak with the council. To comment under Oral Communications or any agenda item, you are allowed three minutes to speak per agenda item. Emails limited to 350 words can also be submitted to the city clerk and it will be read into the record. This word limit is set to adhere to the typical three-minute time allowance. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the Raise Hand option to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or public comment. Lastly, because we are all not in the same room, all votes at this meeting will be taken by roll call.
Thank you. I hereby call to order the City Council meeting for the city of Monteserino Tuesday, November 16th, 2021, and roll call, please.
Councilmember Lawler.
Present.
Councilmember Megacek.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Mayor Potem Alahi.
Here.
And Mayor Luthold.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Ms. Radcliffe, for Mr. Leonardi, any changes to the orders of the day?
No changes.
Being none.
None for me.
Great, thank you. Seeing none, we will go ahead and move to Oral Communications. Oral Communications is time for members of the public to speak to the council about matters which are not on the agenda. If we have any members of the public wishing to speak tonight on matters that are not on the agenda, please raise your hand to be recognized. Seeing none, we will close Oral Communications. Ms. Radcliffe, do we have any written communications on matters that have not made it to the agenda tonight?
We did not.
Okay, thank you. Moving now to the Consent Calendar. Do we have any council members wishing to ask staff brief questions about items on the consent calendar or wishing to formally pull items for significant discussion? Mr. Megacek. You're on mute. You're still on mute.
I'm sorry. I have a question on the fourth list, and it's just one item. Ask a question now or do you want to later?
Yeah, go ahead and ask if it's simple questions. Let's go ahead and ask the questions, get answers from staff.
The termite expenses that were paid, was that for the City Hall building or was it for the Annex Building?
Mr. Leonardi, or Mr. Sanrano, do you know?
Steve, I think Steve is asking, answering that. Steve, I think you're on mute. No, we cannot hear you, Steve.
Okay, can everybody hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so Councilmember Megacek, that was for the main building. We had a kind of an obvious outbreak, an infestation going on in the planning, uh, planning office. And I called out a termite company to assess what was going on, and we had to do extensive treatment around our whole building, but it is the the main building. The Annex Building, we know there is termite infestation in that building as well as lead-based pain and other things, but we're not addressing any of those issues at this time, just the main offices in the main City Hall location.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other council member questions? Being none, we'll move to open public comment. Do we have any public comment on matters that are on the consent calendar or requests from the public for us to pull items for detailed discussion? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll close public discussion and return this to council. Council, any further discussions or do we have a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
Oh, move.
Motion from Mr. Megacek and a second from Ms. Lawler.
Councilmember Turner.
Yes.
Councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
Councilmember Megacek.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Alahi.
Aye.
And Mayor Luthold.
Yes.
That motion passes.
Thank you. Moving now to public hearings. We have no unfinished business, so moving to item number one on new business. This is discussion and direction regarding a slope mitigation project on Withy Road. And do we have a staff report on this?
Thank you, Mayor. Jessica Khan is on the line with us.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, perfect. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Jessica Khan, City Engineer. Withy Road is a public roadway in the city of Monteserino constructed prior to the city's incorporation in 1957. The roadway in general is in good condition. It received a slurry seal during the 2020 Annual Pavement Improvement Project. The roadway is adjacent to the west side of 1-8630 Withy Road, and there is a map included in the staff report. Is approximately 20 feet wide, which is common for a rural road in this area of the city, and was constructed in a cut-filled manner, which means there's a steep slope on both the uphill and downhill from the roadway. There is a water line that was just replaced by San Jose Water last year that runs directly underneath the road surface. And there is a PG&E gas main which is located under the uphill shoulder area, which is the area we are talking about this evening. There have been multiple instances of the uphill slope eroding into the roadway. They date back to the early 1980s, ranging from smaller events requiring small road cleanup to significant events requiring minor regrading of the hillside and cleanup requiring heavy equipment. Over the years, the city has installed two sets of sandbags in 2010 and 2017 in an effort to keep these erosion events off of the roadway, but they have not done so in recent years. The most recent erosion event requiring cleanup occurred in February of this year, and there's image of that included in the staff report. In general, these failures have been unpredictable and they require immediate response because they're blocking portions of the roadway, making it rather expensive to get someone out there immediately to clean up the road. In an effort to mitigate this unpredictable maintenance, a geotechnical investigation for the feasibility of retaining wall was completed this past summer. The staff report details potential options for stop stabilization and debris mitigation of this hillside. Based on this geotechnical investigation, prior slope failures and visual observations, there's a really high potential for future failures to impact the roadway. Staff anticipates minor to moderate failures to continue to impact the roadway and a significant seismic event or erosion event that comes after an intense or prolonged rainfall could result in more significant damage to the roadway, possibly requiring roadway reconstruction rather than just to clean up. For these reasons, staff is recommending moving forward with the design and construction of a retaining wall in this location. Alternative options for debris mitigation only would still require periodic maintenance and would not protect against these larger events, but it would provide for a more predictable cleanup schedule and less immediate actions needed in the area, leaving the concurrent condition as is would continue to require unpredictable maintenance. Staff recommends that council direct staff to issue a request for proposals for retaining wall design. The design project would include design alternatives to account for existing utility conditions, namely the PG&E gas line in the hillside and construction cost optimization. Design costs for retaining wall are estimated to be about $40,000 to $45,000. A capital project for construction of a retaining wall can then be scheduled for next fiscal year or following fiscal year. Construction of a retaining wall is estimated at this point to be $400,000 to $500,000, and I'm available for any questions you all may have.
Great, thank you. I have a couple off the top first. One is, what was the cost for cleanup of that slide shown in the picture for February 2021? If you know, for that kind of emergency cleanup.
Thank you, Mayor, for the question. I went out there myself and scooped mud for about four and a half hours. It was probably about six yards of muck, very physical labor. It was kind of an emergency just to get it done, and I ended up getting poison oak all over my body, but that's the price we pay sometimes in this role.
Okay, so it wasn't an emergency cleanup crew and calling out heavy equipment. It was just putting you to work with your shovel.
That is correct.
Okay, great, thank you. And another question possibly from Ms. Khan. How's the downhill side on this? Is it just the uphill side that's an issue and the rest, the downhill side is well stabilized?
I would say the immediate issue is the uphill slope. I'd say the downhill slope is not the most stable road, no, but is it an immediate hazard? No. So, the whole roadway, if you wanted to spend $2 million, could definitely be redone and totally solid, but I would say the immediate hazard is the uphill slope, and the downhill slope is probably good for another 15 to 20 years.
All right, great, thank you. I saw Mr. Megacek's hand first.
Couple different questions. Question, and I'll ask some questions first. What's the 10-year history on how much money would spend each year and cumulative over the past 10 years on this? The next question is, how many residents are uphill of this particular site? The location where the problem is? Those are my two questions right now.
Sure. So your second question first, there's only one residence uphill of this area, and that's the property at 1-8630 Withy Road. Cumulatively, I would say since 2010, which is when the first set of sandbags were put out, the city's probably spent about $30,000 to $40,000 on the sandbag placement and then periodic cleanups.
Just to clarify, I think Mr. Megacek's question may have been uphill in terms of up the street, on the uphill streets and from this.
Oh.
That is correct. I'm trying to determine how many people would be affected if there was, you know, if the road was blocked.
I'd say approximately 15.
And actually, following up on that, is there an alternate exit for those people or is this their only exit?
It is their only exit outside of an emergency situation. There is a roadway that connects, I believe, to Greenwood, and they've used that, for example, when they were redoing the water main this last year, but that's for an emergency situation. I think they got permission of that particular parcel that connects the two, so there's no public exit other than this area of Withy Road.
And Mr. Megacek, did you have any more follow-up on that?
No, but I was curious if Mr. Leonardi was rolling in the mud to get the poison oak all over.
All right, Councilmember Turner. Yeah, you're.
Yes, yes, yes. Are there any residents that are in immediate danger of us not getting on this project right away that you know of, Ms. Khan?
Um, I would say outside of an emergency situation, which is unpredictable. If there was like a major earthquake, that I would say that that slope would be likely to fail and the residents wouldn't be able to get out of the area, not easily anyway. But I would say considering like typical rain, typical, you know, annual erosion events aren't emergency situations at this point.
Thank you.
And Mayor Potem Alahi.
Thank you. So there is no retaining wall at this time, so this will be a brand-new retaining wall covering to protect that hill?
Correct.
So when you're constructing a retaining wall, it ends up having its own problems because it prevents moisture and water from flowing down and you've got an accumulation of additional dirt. So as you're preparing the retaining wall, you know, you want to make sure that it's, any collapse that happens later on, which is going to be much worse. The retaining wall is built in a manner so that it protects against that, and I'm sure you're going to take a look at it, but that increases our liability if the retaining wall crashes and the entire hill comes down with it because it was not just being held by the retaining wall as opposed to now just coming down in trickles and little bits. So as you ask for a bit, please make, I'm sure you'll take care of it. That's looked at. The second question I wanted to ask you is, this is a hillside, so is this the only place where there's going to be a problem? Or has somebody taken a look at the rest of the hill? I don't know if Mr. Leonardi's had a chance to go down and see what other areas his services might be required for and to get rid of some of the poison salt beforehand or not, but there may be other parts of the hill that maybe need to look at, so we have some idea. And the third question I was going to ask is, is any of that part of our budget anywhere? Or is it part of some emergency reserves that we have? Thanks. And you don't have to answer all that, I guess.
So definitely your comment about a potential failure of a retaining wall is noted. Other areas up on Withy Road haven't experienced these type of slipouts that the city has recorded anywhere. I've driven up this road many times. As I said, we did a slurry seal on this road last year as well as the water main replacement project, and I did not visually see anything that seemed unstable. Not to say that there isn't anything that's unstable up there, but nothing that seems an obvious issue as this area of Withy Road.
So do we need to look at a more formal look at the rest of the road? Or I guess there's other hillsides also we have in Monteserino. Is there a regular time period within which somebody just goes on and takes a look at everything? Do we need to establish some kind of criteria with every few years, a couple of years, those hillsides are looked at? And also, I guess we should keep in mind our objective standards because, you know, there's SB9s and SB10s coming up. We want to make sure that these are safe places for additional development. Is that something you guys could take a look at?
I would say as far as looking at slopes in general on public roadways, those are often looked at when we do roadway maintenance, which is periodic, and some areas have not been completed for a long time. So I would say there's probably areas in the city that do need to be evaluated because the roadway hasn't been maintained in some time. So that is noted. And then I cannot speak to design standards because I am not a planner.
Yeah, and I understand that. And I know you've looked at the road and you've got a rating on every road that's in Monteserino, but I don't know if you have a similar rating on hillsides or not. And whether we should have some ratings on hillsides also, to have some kind of an idea whether these are very stable or very unstable or anywhere in between, so we can budget for it. Is there a way of doing that?
That's a good question. I would have to look into if other cities have some kind of hillside or this kind of roadway stabilization monitoring program. We definitely do not here. So I, yes, that is something that I would have to research. I do not know.
Yeah, I guess what we're looking for is input from you to say, yeah, we should or we shouldn't, or everything's fine, don't worry about it. Or, yeah, periodically, we should have some kind of a hillside monitoring program and maybe even a fire safety monitoring program all put together. Because I think it feels better if we have an upside window because we can at least budget for it, because I don't know. So the other question was, have you budgeted for this or do we need to budget for it? Similar things in the future, we should have some idea.
So far, this project has not been budgeted for now.
Okay. And Ms. Leonardi, if you have some thoughts on putting something like this in a budget for future?
Certainly. This is, this particular area has been an ongoing problem for the city. It probably should have been constructed as a retaining wall back when the road was constructed, and it never was for whatever reason. Incidentally, a house was subsequently put above where this proposed wall would be. And we, at one point in time, had going back and forth with various owners over the years of, you know, what should be done to resolve the issue of the slides, which essentially is, couldn't undermine the property above it. The sandbag wall that was installed several years back is failing. That wasn't designed to last forever. It's made out of, you know, tarpaulin-type bags filled with sand. So, you know, there's been temporary measures to mitigate it, but a long-term solution is probably a good solution. And this particular, as we look at the whole city, Engineer Khan and I have driven all over the city, this particular area is the only one that stands out. We can go back and try to do an inventory and try to create some kind of a budget, but I don't believe, you know, to my recollection, there is any other need in the city besides this one particular location, which, as was mentioned, should have been completed a long time ago and is an ongoing situation. And to answer Councilmember Megacek's question, when the mud slid down, the vines and all the vegetation came with the mud, and it was like silt almost, and it was really hard to shovel because it was very heavy and wet. But when I was shoveling the vines, I got exposure to the poison oak through all the vines that were mixed in with it. So I wasn't rolling in it. It wasn't obvious.
We're counting on you, and I guess if you have to, you'll probably roll in it too. But yeah, please do take a look at it because I'm just, you know, an unbudgeted item. It's like 400,000 or 500,000, and I think we're only talking about at this point what, a 400-foot stretch that this would cover? Or is that a smaller stretch than that?
Ms. Khan? Approximately 400 feet, correct.
So, I mean, given the size of, the width of the hills we have in the area, that could really be run into millions or billions. So we should, yeah, if you can get a formal report from the staff as to whether we need to do something or not do something or worry about budgeting something in the future, that would be helpful. And it doesn't have to be right away, but, you know, it could be in time, that would be very helpful.
Right, Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you. Jessica, do you know, have the residents at 1-8630, I'm assuming they're the folks that are on top of this hill?
Correct.
Okay, so have they done any work to preserve their property on that slope?
These current owners, not to my knowledge, no.
Because I would imagine that they're, you know, that that hill could use a lot more vegetation. It's quite a mess. And I'm just wondering if they have any plans to do anything that might be helpful, such as more vegetation. And then, did you say that this project could qualify as a pavement improvement project?
Oh, no, that during our pavement improvement project last year, we sorry sealed the road. So the pavement itself is in good condition at this time.
Okay, but this isn't something that could be considered a roadway improvement project?
Uh, no, not, not this part of the project on the uphill slope. It's just really more protecting the roadway slope stabilization.
Okay, and then the second option was a shot creek wall. So, and you said it's not an option for the city to seek an easement, and why is that?
Excuse me, I'm looking at the staff report.
That it wasn't considered an option, but this was something, it was in lieu of a pier wall that would require the PG&E pole to be moved. And what is the difference? I mean, I can see the rebar in there.
So as far, so a typical retaining, what you would think of a retaining wall with piers would require the PG&E gas line to be moved, which means we'd have to have discussion with PG&E and frankly, would probably take over a year or more just to do that portion of the project. Therefore, in the design phase of this project, we'd also explore a shot creek wall that wouldn't require that, but would require the stabilization of that to go more into the adjacent property, which would likely require an easement. So it's not really feasible unless the city gets an easement from that property owner, which has not yet been discussed with that property owner.
And so, okay, but you will be discussing that? Is that an option to discuss with them? I mean, I would imagine they would be interested because it would preserve their property, correct?
That is a potential, yes.
Okay, okay. And then the third question is, if the K-rail barriers, how, is there a standard height on those or could those be something that could be higher? What is the height of those vis a vis a retaining wall?
So typically, those are just three to four feet and they're at the toe of the slope. They definitely come higher, or you can get something similar to a K-rail that's precast concrete, basically. That can be higher. You don't want them to be too high because they can tip eventually because they are made out of concrete. But so, yes, they can, that is a potential option.
And so, and would those be higher than the sandbags that are there now?
Yes.
Okay. And in your opinion, what would the cost be of maintenance on cleaning that up? Would it, would it over time cost more than installing an actual, you know, pier wall?
Likely not, considering part of the option of doing that debris barrier is that the maintenance would be periodic, so it could be scheduled and, you know, you could get different proposals and go at the lower cost. But it would definitely, we would continue to have the risk of a larger erosion event.
Sure, sure. And the risk of a larger erosion event could probably, could happen in many more places, I would imagine, in our, in our city.
That is true, yes.
Okay. And the likelihood of being able to manage cleanup of this is fairly consistent, and it would just require, what, like monthly or as an event happens?
I would say more like annually to biannually.
Okay, okay. All right, I think that is it. Oh, what about, what about netting? I know you've seen, I mean, I know I've seen hillsides, particularly like in Malibu, that have like this sort of, it's almost like steel netting on, is that something that would be an option or no?
Typically, those are more for rockfall hazards, and there aren't a whole, like, Mr. Leonardi was saying, there aren't a whole lot of rocks in there. It's mostly just silt. So I mean, yeah, I don't, there's no real benefit into putting that kind of mitigation there.
All right, that's what I figured. Okay, thank you.
And Councilmember, there was a question regarding the use of, you know, tax funding. I think particularly the state gas tax. That may, this project may be an eligible use for those types of funding, actually. You know, the State Controller's Guidelines for Use of Gas Tax Funding cover earthwork protective structures adjacent to the right-of-way installation of walls or replacement of retaining walls to a higher standard and installations of barriers for traffic safety. So this is the kind of project that potentially staff could look to, you know, the state's gas tax fund to fund.
Oh, good to know. Thank you.
Councilmember Turner.
Yes, I was actually, my, my, my comment was that we could use the gas tax funding. But I have another question related to that. Is it possible to get PG&E to, to shoulder some of the bills here?
Knowing what I know about negotiations with PG&E, I suspect that would be very difficult. They're likely not going to be able to provide funding, you know, without there being some sort of line item in, you know, you know, user rates to recover that cost. And so they're not going to want to be going through that process necessarily unless there's some sort of clear legal obligation for them to be burdening the cost of this hillside or to, unless there's a clear obligation that they're required to do, you know, hillside stabilization as a result of something that they did, such as, you know, their gas line there. If we can pin some sort of liability on them, then they might be willing to engage. But otherwise, I suspect they're going to say this is not our problem.
Councilmember Megacek.
Thank you for the explanation, City Manager Leonardi. I can appreciate the horribleness of Waysono. This is, if you look on the west side of University where you go along with Sona, there's kind of a little retaining wall along there. City Engineer Khan, have you, are you familiar with that, with that area that I'm describing? Because that may be, could you use a technique like that to help stabilize the dislocation?
That is definitely something that could be explored during the design of a retaining wall. That would still be a retaining wall structure and something that would need to be designed by some kind of structural engineer. I suspect that the slope there is too steep and too unstable for that to be really effective, but that is definitely something that could be part of the design analysis.
Understood. And then the slurry coat that we put in, in that 400 feet, would that have to be redone? uh, would that have to be redone after this work or would it be done as part of this work? And what would the, the cost of that quarter be? A slurry steel beam?
I would say part of the roadway would, uh, right adjacent to the wall would probably need to be cut out and repaved after, during and after the construction. I'd say it'd be marginal to the cost of the retaining wall, probably in like the twenty thousand dollar range.
And, uh, the budgeted amount for, to, to do the design work, that's forty thousand, that would be on top of whatever the cost is, the quarter five hundred thousand, is that correct?
Correct.
I have no more questions.
Okay, I have a couple more things to ask. Um, I'm wondering how much of these, uh, where, where does our, uh, either easement or uh, control end and the homeowners begin relative to what we're seeing in the picture with the sandbags there? Is the homeowner's property start right behind those and, and their responsibility uh, is, is basically the hillside immediately beyond? Or how far does Monte Sereno's jurisdiction reach?
So I've discussed this with our city attorney and if, uh, you were able to address this question, you might have a better answer.
Um, my, my understanding is that the city, when it constructed the roadway, acquired an easement, uh, for maintenance of, um, the hillside in that particular location. So in terms of the city's jurisdiction, um, you know, it, it, my understanding is there is an easement there for the city to maintain roadway improvements, including necessary improvements for stabilization. Um, obviously we would verify that with the property owner in question before proceeding with any sort of project.
And I, related to that, um, if we have, um, obviously the easement to maintain, does the homeowner still have a responsibility or an obligation on their side to maintain? Um, and I'm thinking, uh, to what council member Lawler was saying, uh, relative to plantings or other stabilizing of the hillside itself. Um, can we either share or pass that burden to the homeowner? What's the situation related to that? Because I agree, it looks like it's not properly planted and, uh, needs to have the right plantings with the right barriers underneath them to hold them together while they put out their roots.
Yeah, that's something we can certainly look into. Um, I, I would say that, you know, with respect to property maintenance, the city code does have a provision, uh, that the property owner is responsible for maintenance of the property. Um, you know, notwithstanding the city easement, my concern would be looking into whether or not that is realistic and feasible uh, in light of sort of the concurrent condition of the property. And, you know, whether we can just plant things on it as it exists now without first stabilizing it, if that makes sense.
Yeah. And, and also again, I mean, whether we can and want to, or whether we can require them to. Uh, because if it's their hillside falling down on our road, it seems like, um, that may be on them and, and either on them as a property owner or on their insurance. Um, and, and certainly we have a duty to maintain the road, but they, if they have a duty to maintain the hillside, uh, then, then we can kind of work with them to do it right and maybe do some cost sharing on that. It's something that I think might be worth exploring. Um, so, so that's just something, uh, to think about as, as this is a discussion item. Um, we still have to worry about, yes, I mean, how do we keep the hillside off the road? Uh, when it inevitably comes down in some amounts, it looks like that's a pretty common occurrence. The other question, um, that I have is, um, I guess gas tax funding, um, is really just taking from the pie that we already have, which we're putting towards other road maintenance, uh, as opposed to being additional funds. Uh, first, is that true? And second, uh, could there be other grants, funding, infrastructure, things that we could potentially try to get to cover this in terms of hillside stabilization?
Uh, so to answer the first part of your question, yes, uh, this is all the same formula, gas tax funds. There are no additional funds. I'd be taking away probably from our general pavement maintenance, um, to fund this with gas tax funds. Um, as far as grant funding goes, um, sometimes there is grant funding when there is already an emergency. I'm like, if the hillside were actually to collapse, we could get grant funding, uh, through FEMA at times for those type of projects. But in general, just for, um, slope stabilization, there isn't a whole lot of grant funding out there if it's not in relation to another project, such as putting in some kind of bike lane or active transportation or it's near a school site where you're trying to put in a sidewalk, just a standalone retaining wall on a rural road is likely not eligible for grant funding.
All right, thanks. Um, okay, uh, since no other hands up at the moment, let me formally open this for public discussion now. Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? If so, please raise your hand to be recognized. Seeing none, we'll close public discussion and bring this back to council and staff for further discussion and, uh, guidance, further comments, ideas, Ms. Lawler.
I just had a quick question. You mentioned that there is an easement that exists with the city on that property. Is that not something that, is that an easement that we can't use if you were to use the shot creek option? I'm just curious. I'm a little bit confused.
Oh, there is an easement. It's unlikely that the easement goes far enough into the property, um, to build that type of wall. There, we need to get an additional easement.
Okay.
I'm sorry, that is unclear on the staff report.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Mekachak.
Uh, a couple of things. Uh, I think that if, if I live above where the problem is, um, I would want the city to do, prepare it and I would be willing to give them an easement. So that's my first thought. My second thought is I think it's great that we had this discussion and the alternatives are popping up. Uh, it strikes me that we could use a little bit more information prior to taking a decision one way or another. And I know we can't do that tonight, but, uh, I, I don't feel comfortable yet, say, let's go ahead and spend forty thousand on a, on a study for this without really having a more exhaustive list of what our alternatives are. Those are some of my thoughts.
All right, other council members. I guess I will, I'll join in with what Mr. Mekachak is saying that, I mean, it sounds like to, tonight was a good discussion to, to bring forward the thoughts and ideas here. Uh, but it does seem to me as well that we're looking at now some, some good ideas to investigate, get more information. And then, um, probably tighten up the ideas about, uh, what the alternatives would be. And then whether we need to be spending that money specifically, um, on design and then design of what, um, whether we're designing in the alternative or whether we have kind of clear design ideas. So those are my thoughts. I see now, uh, I think I saw Ms. Lawler waving her hand a moment ago.
I, I was just gonna, I was just gonna agree. I, I think, um, you know, I think we can all agree that this needs to be addressed. And I, I would like to have the knowledge of whether or not the neighbor is willing to, to grant an easement. So I think, um, once, once we have more information in that regard, then we can certainly make a decision. Thanks.
All right. And, uh, Mr. Lahin.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I, I, there is a lot here. I mean, all of a sudden you get hit with a four, forty thousand or initial request followed by a four hundred thousand, uh, proposed, uh, cost of doing this. Uh, I think the, uh, the homeowner may also have some responsibility. It's his, his, his hill that's sliding down to protect that a little bit. So maybe you should look at that also. Um, and if it's not his responsibility, then I guess, and if it's ours, then we have to take it on. And, and another question I had is how urgent this is, uh, seismic event can happen at any time. And then the other issue was, uh, apparently the intense rainfall would cause problems. And what predictability of that is, so if you move it out, how far do you want to move it out for the discussion? Is there some other information we can get? I guess we need to find out if you can get the easement also if the homeowner will kick in with some funds. Maybe that can be brought back to us and we can make a decision on which way to go.
All right. Other discussion, ideas, uh, staff, uh, feel that input has been relatively clear at this point?
Yes, I think I have enough to go on to bring this back to at a later date.
All right, great. Okay, uh, oh, Mr. Mekachak.
I was going to say that city attorney Roden had a good idea to see if, if he really could get something out of our gas tax, uh, uh, money. And, uh, that's worth, worthy of looking at in parallel, uh, with, uh, city engineer Khan.
Yeah, I think, um, that, that they, it sounds like, I mean, that we just need to tighten up that answer. But it sounds like, um, we probably can take it from the gas tax. But that takes away from budget that we were already planning on allocating to our pavement projects. So it's not more, it's not new money. It's a takeaway from what we have. It's just pushing the money around.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, um, sounds like, uh, we've, uh, got reasonable discussion and direction. So let's go ahead and move on now to item two. This is a discussion on the proposed statewide initiative regarding local land use and direction to staff. Do we have, uh, staff report on this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Steve Leonardis, city manager. Just a brief introduction and I would like to turn it over to Mr. Rudin about the parameters of the discussion, the depth of the discussion. But essentially, as you know, SB nine, SB ten passed by the state. And there is a ballot initiative being, uh, circulated. Ultimately, they, they went to the attorney general with the language for the ballot initiative. They're waiting for the approval and they have to wait thirty days. So it will be coming forward for the November twenty twenty two election. Essentially, the idea is for local municipalities to maintain local control, essentially overriding or, um, I, I guess, going against what was pa, uh, what was offered in SB nine and SB ten. Um, and I would like to, again, turn it over to Mr. Rudin. He could, um, elaborate on the rules of the depths of the discussion. Um, because I don't think we're here to take a position either way this evening on the actual initiative, which would be quite premature. But what can and can not be done by Monte Sereno council at this point in time as well as in the future. And that concludes my introduction of the item.
Thank you, Mr. Rudin.
Thank you. And Steve, um, will Diana be presenting sort of, uh, a staff position on, on this? Or, um, or am I sort of expected to give a run through of the, um, initiative measure here?
Essentially Diana is on the line. She did write the staff report. Uh, she can elaborate how, uh, we, we are working along, um, with our objective standards in conjunction. And a future item that is coming before council, as you know, um, and she can elaborate on, on those types of things as well as the information in the staff report. Um, I just wanted to make sure that council was aware of, you know, the parameters of what type of a position can be taken or not taken and when is the ideal time to do that? So that's kind of where you come in to back us up on the legal aspect.
Um, so in general, um, uh, constitution principles and, uh, state court decisions basically say that public money cannot be used, uh, for electioneering purposes. Um, so the city is restricted in terms of what it can use its money for. And when I say it's money, I mean, that includes paid staff time, uh, paid city resources. Um, and, you know, things of that nature. So basically the city can place a measure on the ballot. It can provide and distribute objective and fact-based analysis on a ballot measure. Um, the city can take a view on, you know, a ballot measure, um, provided it's careful not to advocate for or against the measure's passage. So the way that cities typically adopt a position on a measure is that they will have the council adopt a resolution saying that they're either for, uh, or against the passage of the measure. But they can't expend any actual money beyond basically the staff time to do that. Um, you know, in support or against a measure. Um, additionally, staff can respond to inquiries from the public about the, you know, the measure in an objective and fact-based manner. Additionally, uh, hopefully today, staff will present sort of a summary of what they expect. The passage of the measure may, uh, mean for the city in terms of the city's laws and, you know, impacts on city operations. Um, with respect to advocacy, uh, you know, public employees and elected officials can on their own time and using their own resources, you know, engage in ballot measure campaigns. Um, and they can make their own personal contributions to ballot measures, provided that it's pretty clear that that's not the city's position. Um, so, you know, obviously, uh, council members can, you know, participate in the campaign, uh, to the extent that they want to as individuals. Um, and so that's, that's the basic groundwork, um, for, for what cities can and can't do with respect to things that are going to be on the ballot. Now, in terms of adopting a resolution, taking a position on the measure, I know a number of public agencies are doing that now. Um, typically, um, right now, I believe the attorney general has prepared the, uh, ballot title and summary. Um, it was actually just recently posted on the California Attorney General's website. Uh, so that will be the language that, uh, signature gatherers are presented with. Um, and is put before people who are going to be asked to provide signatures. So that's available already. Um, and in general, you know, if public agencies are going to take a position on a ballot measure, oftentimes they will do it, do so before it's on the ballot. Um, and that's perfectly appropriate. Um, typically, once something is on the ballot, you know, the, um, activities of an agency are more likely to be scrutinized by the FPTC. So that is, you know, one of the reasons why typically if an agency is going to take a position, they do so early and then that'll be sort of it.
Okay, um, anything further, Mr. Rudin? Otherwise, I guess, uh, Ms. Perkins can give us a little bit of summary of what she's put into the staff report.
Hello, um, good, good evening, everybody. Um, so my sort of, um, basic understanding of the current, um, or the potential ballot measure is, um, that it would amend the state constitution to restrict the state from, um, imposing zoning standards on local jurisdictions. And it would also be retroactive so that as, um, currently written, it would, um, again, be retroactive. So it would apply presumably to SB nine, um, how it applies to SB three thirty or, um, housing, um, RENA allocation numbers. Um, I, I don't know, um, the answer to all of those details at this point. Um, but I think a, a big piece of this legislation is that it is retroactive to laws that, that the state has already imposed on local jurisdictions.
And I, I'll supplement that a little bit. Um, there are a couple of areas where this, and there's, uh, potential, uh, initiative measures, a little bit unclear. The most recent, um, amendment that was submitted to the attorney general includes language that says, "The purpose of this measure is to ensure all decisions regarding local land use controls, including zonal zoning law and regulations are made by affected communities in accordance with applicable law, including but not limited to CEQA, the California Fair Housing, uh, Fair Employment and Housing Act, prohibitions against discrimination and, um, affirmably, affirmably fair housing." And there's a citation to the government code provisions regarding, uh, local agencies' duties to affirmably further fair housing. Um, and so there is some question, there is going to be some question as to, um, because the actual text of the const, of the constitutional amendment as proposed says that, um, uh, a, uh, county and city general plan, specific plan ordinance or regulation that regulates the zoning, development or use of land within the boundaries of that county or city shall prevail over conflicting general laws. I think there is going to be some room for the courts to interpret and debate whether or not state laws with respect to what a city must have in its general plan, uh, such as requirements to comply with RENA, whether or not, uh, a local agency is going to be able to adopt, you know, conflicting requirements. I would expect, I'd fully expect the state to take the position. I would expect, I'd fully expect the state to take the position that this constitutional amendment does not prohibit the state from making laws with respect to RENA or with respect to mandatory requirements for local agency general plans. So I would expect if this ballot initiative does pass, that there will be some dispute over that, which is going to take a fair amount of time to work out in the courts. Additionally, because this doesn't go into effect until November twenty, since it doesn't go into the ballot, onto the ballot until November twenty twenty-two, assuming that enough signatures are gathered. The reality is that, you know, SB nine goes into effect January first, twenty twenty-two, so it will have been in effect a minimum of eleven months, plus however long it takes to certify election results if this measure passes. You know, any sort of approvals that a local agency gives respect to existing land use approvals would not be void. And additionally, because this is a constitutional amendment, it's not self-executing. So it gives the city the power to, you know, adopt, it would potentially give a city the power to adopt local zoning and land use regulations that are in conflict with the requirements of the state general law, but it doesn't, you know, automatically void any sort of state requirements. So the city would need to pass, you know, ordinances that it would, you know, in whatever manner that it would like in order to implement any new zoning regulations. So, and the city couldn't do that until after the election results were certified.
All right, thank you. Questions initially, and then we'll have some public comment and then come back to further follow-up discussion. Ms. Turner.
Yes, I have a question, I guess, for Attorney Rudin. The proponents point out that the new housing laws recently passed in Sacramento, SB nine and SB ten require taxpayers to subsidize the cost of new developments instead of the developers. Can you comment on that?
You know, I'm not exactly sure what the proponents' position is on that, on that issue. You know, and typically, you know, local governments can exact from developers, subject to certain restrictions in state law, you know, necessary funds or dedications to ensure that there is applicable provision of public services to the new development and to offset any sort of costs or impacts that result as a result of development. There are certain limitations, you know, smaller subdivisions, you can't require certain dedications under the subdivision map act. Typically, under the mitigation fee act, the city can't impose, you know, fees that are in excess of, you know, its costs to provide, to provide services or mitigate impacts of development. So I, you know, the sort of scope of what a developer can be obligated to fund, you know, there's a lot of different laws that regulate that, including laws related to, you know, park dedications and things like that. But for a significant chunk of expenses that, you know, local agencies are required to bear, you know, that result out of the initial development, those are costs that a developer can often be required to pay for. Now, costs with respect to ongoing services or impacts such as, you know, maintenance of roads twenty, thirty years down the line. You know, provision of police and fire protective services, you know, ten or fifteen years down the line. The general concept there is that, you know, the ultimate residents of development will be taxpayers. I don't think that this particular measure, you know, is going to impact any of the rules or restrictions with respect to costs and fees that can be passed on to developers as part of land use approvals for development. So I suspect, and you know, I have not seen anything one way or the other, saying that this measure is intended to address things like, you know, limits in state law and the mitigation fee act on, in terms of costs or requirements on the cities for use of fees that are collected from developers. I will say that a lot of those limitations are also sort of backstopped by constitutional principles and restrictions. So realistically, I would not expect that this measure affects that one way or the other.
So in order for this to be on the ballot, we need about 1.5 million signatures from California, is that correct?
I'm not sure about the exact number, but there is a requirement to get a certain percentage of the electorate, yes.
Mr. Alahi.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess we're going, I think we're just touching the periphery of this whole thing. I think we really need to understand SB nine and SB ten and how it impacts it. I went through SB nine earlier on today and I basically seems to seem to say, and I'm going to be looking to our attorney for guidance on that, obviously, that you can divide up to a plot into two plots, but if you have enough objective standards in place, you can restrict how far it can be developed and can be not be, but you can't, but, but you can't prevent them from doing less than eight hundred, eight hundred square foot. And that was kind of SB nine, so the objective standards become really critical as to whether we are able to provide objective standards that are helpful to the community and that's what the community wants to see. SB ten, I'm not very clear on, is that a, is that, you know, is it just allowing us to go ahead and zone for ten years on a parcel or is it requiring us to do that? I'm not clear. So what might be helpful is if we can get a Gilbert's version of a summary of what SB nine and SB ten are going to impose on us. And also with it, something that sets for what objective standards would qualify for us to be, to able to control the development so it doesn't get out of hand. So that our planning director, Ms. Perkins, would have a checklist of, yeah, here's objective status we're looking for that will help us do some proper planning and, you know, go from fireside problems or hillside, hill slope issues or any, any other things that would come, come in. So I think a checklist like that would be ordered so you can use it as a guidance as to what we can do, because SB nine is going to be in play for at least one year and we'll be having to deal with it. And but we need, we need that kind of template. I mean, the costs of, yeah, I mean, the legislature provides that they're not going to reimburse us, so we have to figure out how to get the cost, so that's also important. And whether we approve the, whether we go for this ballot or not go for the ballot, I don't know if that's really that critical right now. I think before we even do that, we all should have an understanding of what these two laws are trying to do to us. But if the idea on the ballot is to just sweep everything aside, including the A-bag requirements or the housing element requirements, that's, that's a different thing, you know, other than just addressing SB nine and SB ten problem. So is that something we can get from you, Mr. Rudin, as far as getting a Gilbert's summary version? My days, it used to be Gilbert, I think probably in your day, it's something else. But it gets some kind of a summary on what these two legislative mean and what are the objective standards we, we need to look, look at to see if we can find those.
Yes, and I fully expect that there will be a study session slash recommendation on SB nine regulations that will be coming forth to the Site and Architecture Commission in December. And additionally, you know, I expect the staff will be preparing an ordinance for the council's consideration and potential adoption in December as well. Since your questions are tangentially related to the ballot measure, I'll briefly answer them. SB ten is a bill that would allow, but not mandate, a city to basically allow for zoning up to ten units by ordinance in area, in areas that are, you know, located in specific locations such as a transit rich area, an urban infill site. And so those are, that's not a requirement that's being mandated by the state. It's a way that the state is saying local jurisdictions can overturn restrictions enacted by local initiative. With SB nine, so basically unless the council acts, SB ten doesn't impose any sort of requirements on the city. SB nine imposes two new ministerial approval processes on local jurisdictions. Basically, you are entitled to, as a matter of right, have an urban lot split on a lot that splits the lot via ministerial process from one lot into two lots. And additionally, there is a process by which you can get ministerial approval on any lot of up to two dwelling units. And the city is allowed to enact objective zoning standards with respect to that ministerial approval process, provided that it doesn't restrict the ability to construct up to two units on a parcel of at least eight hundred square feet apiece. So in theory, an existing parcel, presuming that it can physically accommodate four units, could be subject to a ministerial urban lot split process. And then on that urban lot split, you could get up to two units each. The state SB nine says that if you have two units that are approved under the the two unit provision and the parcel is subdivided such that there's going to be four units already, that the local agency is not required to approve any ADUs or JADUs. So you can't be required to get more than four units on a parcel. What a lot of local jurisdictions are doing is just restricting the SB nine process to units of no more than eight hundred. Some are allowing for slightly bigger units, but typically they're restricting the size and the height, you know, in order to minimize impacts on, you know, on communities, et cetera. So those are the kinds of objective regulations that the city is, you know, currently looking into and is likely going to be bringing before the Site and Architecture Commission and the council later in December.
Thank you for that, and that was kind of my impression as to what the legislature was trying to do. So I was looking at it as you could split one lot into two, and but just, and then maybe you can split those two lots that have been split to another two each, I guess.
And that is, that is not the case.
You can go from one to four?
You, you, you cannot do the urban lot split more than once.
So, so you're suggesting that in SB nine, you can, you have, you can go from one to four, four lots at one time?
No, you can go from, you can go from one lot to two lots. And on each of the two lots that are created, SB nine says that you can build up to two structures. And this, and the city can cap those structures using objective zoning standards to a certain unit size, but not less than eight hundred square feet per unit.
Okay, so, so you have, okay, so you only have two lots, but you have two structures on each lot. And then one of the structure could be bigger, but even the you, can you cap the, when you split the lot, can you cap the other structure to eight hundred square foot? Only or does that structure can be larger and then it can build another eight hundred square foot?
So you can limit, you can limit SB nine qualifying parcels to having no more than two dwelling units. And you can basically ensure that the, those dwelling units are no more than whatever side stand, size standard you set. And that size standard that you set can be as little as eight hundred square feet. So basically, what you could do, what SB nine may end up looking like in practice is that you could limit people to having basically two ADUs on a parcel or buildings of equivalent size.
Okay. That's where the four units come from, got it?
Yeah, so basically, you're allowed one lot split per parcel. And on that now split parcel, you're allowed two buildings per, or two dwelling units per per parcel that is created.
Right, and you can limit each, each one of those buildings to eight hundred square foot?
Yes.
Okay. Interesting, so it's not, it's not quite the end of the world if we keep our objective standards in mind. I mean, it almost seemed like one time that we were going to have this massive development and there'll be big units being built everywhere. But this, this is almost, I mean, in a way, if you limit to eight hundred square foot, that would make, that may override from the, some affordable housing, which is one of the goals of getting some stuff done. But there's a lot to look into, thank you.
Yeah, and that'll obviously come up on future agenda items here in a little while. So other questions, comments at the outset here, council member law?
Thank you, yes, I do have, I do have a question. First of all, I did ask to have this on the agenda night. I wanted to provide information and an opportunity for the public to learn about this and for us to have a meaningful conversation, which we are having, and I'm very happy to have Sergio's input. My question to Sergio is, my understanding is that the language in this would, would give local land use policy to local government and key instances, but it does not override anti-discrimination laws, fair and equal housing or CEQA. Those are all safe, am I correct in that?
I would say that that appears to be the intent behind the most recent amendment that was put out by the proponents. You know, how courts are going to interpret that is very hard to say at this time. But, you know, the current language does include, you know, a statement of purpose and intent that it says that, you know, local land use control decisions regarding local land use controls should be made by affected communities in accordance with applicable law. And then they do list, you know, California Fair Employment and Housing Act, which does have covenants in it, you know, prohibiting, you know, discrimination and zoning and similarly cites a different provision of the government code that prohibits discrimination and zoning. So I would expect that, given that statement of purpose in the, in the measure, that that would be the case.
Okay, okay, well, that's good to know. And then also, my, my, my other understanding is, the other thing that stuck out to me was, it says here, section two, "No voter-approved local initiative that regulates the zoning, development or use of land within the boundaries of any county shall be overturned or otherwise nullified by any legislative body." So basically, it's, there's something called the statewide concern that would give the legislature the, the right to override voter-approved measures. So this is basically saying to protect voters' voices, is that correct?
Yes, that, that is my understanding as well. Typically, with respect to charter cities and charter counties, those are allowed to make any sort of rules and regulations they want, except for matters the legislature deems a matter of statewide concern. That's less of an issue, that's less of a consideration here with general law cities such as Montessorano, because they're still subject to the state general laws and they don't, you know, have charter authority to make whatever rules that they would like to. But typically, you know, for a lot of charter cities or charter counties, they may have voter-approved local initiatives that invoke or modify, you know, that government agency's charter. And in order to sort of, you know, interfere or supplant that, the state legislature does need to make a finding that whatever regulations it's enacting are a matter of statewide concern. And, you know, sometimes those, those kinds of findings are subject to challenge.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, let's take a veer away from council members for a moment and open this to public comment to make sure that we cover that. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item tonight? So please raise your hand to be recognized. Seeing none, we'll close public comment now and return this to the council for any further questions or discussion. Anyone else want to weigh in on this as it is at this point? Obviously, it's something that we can bring back on future agenda items as things develop. Ms. Law, is your hand up again?
It is, I just, I actually had a question, so, so, well, actually, I guess it's not a question, but Sergio, you had mentioned that, that the city can provide on our website, objective and fact-based information regarding this or any other legislative items?
Yes, I think that's the case.
Okay, so this is something that while it's certainly premature at this point, because it hasn't actually made it to the ballot yet, but it's, I like, you know, it's important that we have this discussion and that people, you know, it's, it's important to me that our residents are informed in the event that it does become on the ballot. So is that something? In the event that it does become on the ballot, so is that something that we can, that? I guess when would be the appropriate time to. Provide that information on our website, if that's.
Yeah, I'm, in terms of the information that the, that the city can provide and post on its website, that would be information concerning the potential impacts the ballot measure might have on the city. Including, you know, on city departments, city staff, city regulations, city programs. Um, you know, the city obviously can't post, you know, information. You know, can't post materials on its website telling people that they should go vote, uh, you know, one way or the other on the ballot measure, but, uh, you know, in terms of. Um, posting, you know, general information about the fact that the measure may create some more tools for the city. Or may require the city to update certain of its regulations, um, you know, that is something the city can post at any time.
All right, well, obviously, it's, it's, we, we need more time to track this and see what's going on, so, um, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, I have a further follow, follow up question, um, just to, to see if I understood this correctly, um. I think I heard that um it is possible for the council to take a position. Uh, for or against uh or supporting or not supporting the uh, the ballot initiative. Um, and, and that that might be something that the council might choose to do. Relatively early while signatures are still being gathered, did I hear that correctly, that that is an option available to us? We should, we're not to use city time for the uh opposing or uh or promoting the initiative, but that the council could take a position, is that right?
That's correct, and most of the time when that happens, that's done by a resolution adopted by the council. Um, you know, that's something that we could try and draft and bring back if the council indicates it wants to take a position.
And that, and that could be during the signature gathering even, um. If uh, if the council had a position for or against this going on to the ballot, is that right?
Yes.
All right, great, so, so maybe not so premature, Miss Lawler, um, uh, it sounds like, um, it may be something that we might wanna revisit as. As ballot signatures are being gathered, if we have an opinion, which we obviously need to come to through having these kinds of discussions, so. Uh, my thinking is this may be an appropriate item to continue to pull in as a discussion item. Number one is it develops, number two, as we look at our calendar where we can fit it in, because. Um, obviously, sometimes our calendars are like tonight's, which are great for lots of good open discussions on these, and sometimes we have a lot of things with, with land use decisions going on and all. So, um, I think, uh, unless there are other comments, um, let's go ahead and prepare to move to the next item. So, uh, seeing no hands coming up, let's go ahead and move to item three this evening, this is discussion on C Quick Fix project management and direction. Uh, do we have a staff report on this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, a brief introduction, so this was requested by council member Turner to be brought back on the agenda. And she has a slide presentation attached to the staff report. Um, and staff just wanted to make a few comments on the progress that we have made since our last discussion on this item. We have received two inquiries via C Quick Fix that we have been address, addressing and tracking through the system. So, um, since the last report, it's been about six weeks, um, we've received two more requests. Um, staff's recommending that the operation or the management of C Quick Fix. Stay the way we currently have it set up, we have it, you know, it's, it's barely launched in late August and. There has been requests in the presentation to have the city clerk's office take over managing the, the C Quick Fix application, but. Um, staff, uh, you know, city manager's office should still be, our recommendation is city manager's office should maintain. Uh, the operation and, and monitoring of it for the time being, and if it changes into a more robust or something else later and. The duties need to be, uh, you know, delegated then, then we can discuss it at that time, but right now, we're in infancy stages and. We don't see any need to change any configuration or operation of the app. Um, there was discussion about adding additional users and if we were to add two more users, it would be another five thousand dollars. Staff is not advocating adding any users at this time, currently, it's myself, Ms. Khan and Ms. Quong, who are users. Um, of the C Quick Fix, now others can be assigned the um. The. Tasks through C Click Fix, um, such as planning or, or building or such, but. We are the ones who are able to go in and change the configuration and, and change the operations. So we recommend that we keep that the same for now because we don't see any value add by spending an additional five thousand dollars at this point. To add additional users. There was a little bit of discussion about a database system, C Quick Fix actually isn't really. Geared or tailored to become a database system for um. For us to capture residents' data, a lot of the requests we get are anonymous and essentially it's just about tracking issues and resolving issues, but not necessarily. Gathering a lot of data and understanding where that data is necessarily coming from. And I think the anonymity of it is what makes it more desirable for users because sometimes residents don't want to know. That they may be reporting construction activity at a neighbor's house or whatnot and they, they don't want to potentially be exposed, so they don't offer their name, address and. And all those kinds of things, so, um, if council were interested in developing some kind of a, a database for all city residents. Where we would capture name, address, phone numbers for everybody, um, that's a different discussion at a different time. Um, as was previously stated, currently, the volume is light and. The reason I think it is is the time of the year, of course, it's kind of the, we're getting on the holiday seasons, the, the, you know, gets dark earlier, less construction activity, less. You know, a lot of stuff going on in people's lives with the, with the time of the season. Um, but we also get a lot of requests still through email, through, um. Residents walking into our lobby or just phone calls and we usually handle those requests right away, there was a comment last time. About, I think it was Los Altos Hills, we should be getting seventy two inquiries a year, we just do not have that much volume, we may get. Somewhere thirty to forty inquiries a year via phone, email, calls and all the other methods, and a lot of that was. Kind of pent up issues that were not addressed previously, as we had earlier this evening, you know, like a retaining wall issue that's been going on for a long time. We're trying to address a lot of these lingering issues and it's hard to judge what kind of volume we will have going forward, but the less amount of volume we have coming in. Is actually a good indication that things are getting handled at, you know, more immediately. Um, via the phone, via the email, or however else we receive the requests. Now, I know ideally, it would be nice to have every single request potentially come through the C Click Fix app and there was a discussion last time about how do we get. More awareness about it, we did put it on the back of the Peaceful Mountain Monitor, the, the September issue, we did um mail a postcard to everyone's house. We did um send out e-blast next door, uh, Ms. Radcliffe did post on social media. About C Click Fix and how to obtain it, we also um implemented the council's requests uh from six weeks ago where we. We have a button that says right on our main webpage, resident issues, uh submit a request rather, and you click on submit a request. And it puts you right at the C Click Fix page where you can access downloading it, it tells you how to download it through. Apple Store or Google Play and right next to those two buttons, we will be adding a QR code that Ms. Radcliffe created. So you can click on the QR code, so we were doing, um, as council requested, everything we can to make it accessible. We could potentially send out an additional postcard to everyone's home, um. And we can incorporate the QR code on the postcard as a way to encourage residents to download the app. Um, but again, it, it's all going to come down to. You know, it takes effort, it takes desire to download the app and then, of course, they want to know, or, or if they have a use for it, if they do have a request. That will incentivize them to do so, if they don't have any issues, of course, they, they might not do so. And of course, a lot of our residents may just continue to approach us the way they have been doing for years, which is through the, through the other channels. So that, that's my information, um, all the updates we have on C Quick Fix, I'm open for questions, comments. And council member Turner does have a slide presentation uh attached to our staff report, I'm assuming that she would like to cover that.
Right, um, yes, Ms. Turner. I can bring up, and if we can bring up the slide presentation.
Yes. All right, bring this up.
Uh, it is on the screen, actually, it looks like, um, it's, it's been popped up. So, um.
Well, here it is.
There it is.
Uh, is that me or is that Ms. Radcliffe bringing it up?
That's, uh, uh, we have it up for you, council member Turner.
Okay, so, so here's, here's, here's why I'm very persistent about moving this to, to. Have a process, uh, where we can have something that, you know, is, is more proper rather than. Having it something that we do just a matter of course for the city manager. Uh, we actually began this process in April of twenty, it was a, an operational excellence. And a customer orientation ad hoc committee with council member Lawler and I. Uh, can we get to the next slide, please? Okay, so what have we done today, today, the ad hoc committee uh presented this April twentieth. Uh, during the picnic, uh, our uh city manager implemented it and today, the usage is pretty low. So what can we do to actually resolve this? We have the next slide. The, the, this, the, um. Flyer that we sent out needs more clarity, if I were to look at this flyer and I got this in the mail, I would say, oh, this is one that. You know, I have no idea who C Click Fix is, I'll, I'll throw it away, right? And, and what can we do to make this a more, you know, usable flyer, next slide, please? We sent out this flyer, we resend this flyer with the Montesereno logo and the QR code and we asked the residents, just take your phone and download the app. What's gonna happen is, is with SB nine and SB ten, as we get more residents in, we're gonna need a, a system that. They can connect to City Hall right away, we've, I've, I've heard complaints that, well, you know, we, we don't get. Response on weekends, we don't get response after hours, but with, with a system that's online, we will get better response, our, our. Our residents will get better response, so let's move to the next one, please. Michelle? Okay. One of the things we need to do is to go on to our website and change our website to have. How our residents can, can actually connect to C Click Fix, for emergency, they can go call nine one one and for non emergency, they can use C Click Fix. Next slide, please. We need to advertise, I mean, there is, you know, when you install a software on any system, you have to market it, you have to advertise. So we advertise a peaceful mountain, that's true, we advertise on, on the newspaper, right, so that residents can. Take advantage of it. Next slide, please. We also, when was the last time we actually uh asked residents to go to C Click Fix, that was six weeks ago. We need to, we need to do this more often. You need to build awareness, when you're, you're, you're introducing a new product, you need to build product awareness, and I think that's one of the things that we're missing. So, next slide, please. We need to do social media outreach, Twitter, Facebook, right? These are some of the things that, that, you know, uh, new residents coming in, especially when they come from other cities that are aware of. Next slide, please. Okay, we talked about the different categories, this is not. A, 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 a database build, this is something that's already built in to C Click Fix. This is what we need, you remember when, when uh Captain De Senna would come in and give us. Uh, reports on what's happening, how many calls that he's had, this is what we need. Same, same thing, and this is what C Click Fix can do today. You look at the categories of, of reporting, you, you will see roadside, trash, right? And, and, and I'm not gonna go through it, but you can actually read it, so next slide, please. Okay, this is a report from uh the city of Cupertino, now, we can't use this because this is a. This is a system that they're actually generated from scratch, they have a big IT system. And this is what they get, and, and this is not something that I'm proposing. Let's go to the next slide, please. Okay, some of these things we may be able to get, we don't have to give the name of the residents, we just give the name. The number of residents, these are the KPIs, the key product indicators, monthly and quarterly, this way we know how many calls were opened, if we get thirty calls, fine. If we get seventy five calls, now that's good, we're not, we're not looking at the number of calls rising. We're just looking at the way we can service our customers. And there are residents, next slide, please. So we are not alone in this thing, if you look at the cities around us, you will find that Atherton is using C Click Fix. Hillsboro, Los Altos Hills, Milpitas, Menlo Park, right? And if you look at the right side, what you'll see is a sample report, well, who's on the sample report? Who, who is managing this project, not necessarily the city manager, but the city clerk, because, yes, you will, you know. You will have to have time into the, the marketing of C Click Fix. And rather than burdening our city manager, I would like to get Michelle Radcliffe to do this, to do the implementation and to finish it, next slide, please. And you're smart, okay, I want her to be able to use C Click Fix as a way to be introduced. To the citizens, to our residents, when you look at uh the success we've had in the past with city staff. It not only included the city manager, it included, you know, the planner, right? Um, as well as the civic clerk, and that's what I wanna do with C Click Fix, not only do I want the marketing. To be successful, I want the citizens to be aware that Montesereno is upgrading our uh computer system. So, next slide, please. This is the third time I brought this to council. So do we need a vote to make this happen? That is my take. So, Mayor Lou Paul?
Thank you. Thank you, okay, um, let's open this up to um some initial questions and we'll see if there's any public comment and then, uh, we will. Bring it forward and see where this directs us. So, any initial comments or questions from council? Mr. Alahi?
Yeah, I, I, I guess one thing, uh, Mr. Uh. Leonard has pointed out was the cost of an additional person on this, so we already have three licenses, I suppose you could move one license over to Michelle Redcliffe. And it, given the number of people that are signing in, it should not cost us anymore, is there a flat fee for three licenses or are you paying uh extra for each license, Mr. Leonard on this?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, so it's my understanding that the, I think it's, it's either the first two or three licenses that we subscribe for. Were the five thousand dollar quote that we initially um were charged and to add any more would be another five thousand. And to add any more would be another five thousand dollars.
Yeah, so we don't need to add. We can move one of those over to Ms. Michelle Katry.
It, we can ask, I don't know if we've asked that question of CCLIP Fix, but I think that that might be possible. But I, if they give us pushback, you know, we would need, I guess, we'd have to just make a decision whether we wanted to spend an additional five thousand dollars at this time.
Senator Leonard, it's the other issue with moving a license to the three that there that, so three licenses belong to the city manager, the city engineer, and the webmaster, which is Michelle Kwong. I know Michelle Kwong and the city engineer would would require the licensure because, you know, the the webmaster handles the CCLIP Fix on the website. So she would require that licensure, that license. And the city planner, where the majority of our resident issues, I'm sorry, resident, not the city planner, the city engineer, the majority of the issues that the residents have responded to or we expect to respond to would be regarding city engineering, public works issues. So those would then get filtered over to the city engineer. I guess the decision, as Councilmember Turner was expressing, is the third license license, you know, would go to the city manager, who it's currently to the city manager, if it could be transferred over to the city clerk, which we would need to have a conversation with CCLIP Fix. After my conversation with the representatives at CCLIP Fix, to add an additional license would be additional costs, roughly about five thousand dollars. Then if we needed, if we wanted to create that personalized QR code that Councilmember Turner was referring to as the other municipalities have, that again would cost additional monies. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Is is this cost per year for five thousand dollars or one time?
I'll have to confirm, I believe it's, go ahead, Steve.
It's an annual cost. So in other words, our initial membership was five thousand. To add another user, it'd be additional five thousand. And I believe to add the QR code was another five thousand dollars. Now, we did create a QR code, which, as I mentioned, we're adding to our website so the app can be accessed. We can also use that same QR code in marketing material. I do like the the brochure or the page that Councilmember Turner presented in the slide presentation. We could make the postcard two sides, and we could put that on the backside and and the other part on on the front side. So that was a very, very good feedback.
I can download the QR code on the website.
Yes. Yes, Councilmember Turner, I just wanted to clarify. The QR code that was created, that I created, is a, you know, a generic QR code that will just, you know, residents want to download the app, it'll take them to the App Store or to the Google Play Store to download the app. The QR code that CCLIP Fix would create for us would be a customized city of Montesereno QR code that will directly send the resident to our customized personalized city of Montesereno CCLIP Fix application. We currently do not have that. The current process is residents would have to download the app and manually select the city of Montesereno. The QR code that CCLIP Fix will generate create for us, the resident would download the app, and it would automatically be a Montesereno CCLIP Fix app. I I hope that makes sense. So there are two differences in the QR codes that are being talked about tonight.
I I guess what we're trying to do is if we're going to have this app, and it seems like a very useful app, it needs to be something that can be used, you know, without thinking about it. Right now, it's not even on the website. There's a C request. And I am not sure whether you can just put it on the on our website, CCLIP Fix, or it has to be an app on an iPhone. But we need to get to where a person is not scrounging around. I mean, they're having problems, and they have to go download an app first and then figure it out. Obviously, it's going to be easier for them just to call you guys up. And as responsible, as responsible as a staff is, it doesn't make sense for most people to try to go through an app and try to figure out what to do. So is there any way we can bring this app up to stream regardless of who is running it initially? So we can just go on the website? I mean, that's where at least the residents can get to and have a button to say, okay, here's a place where you go to put your complaints and then get your information back? Or is there some hurdle even to get?
That's what the current process is. There is a sub that, as City Manager Leonard has had mentioned, their, the website did include a newer button that says submit a request, I believe is what it says. And that directly sends the resident to, I guess, the reporting page via CCLIP Fix.
Yeah, I'm trying to use that, and I really couldn't couldn't couldn't. You know, if you look at the front page of the website, it just submit a request. Submit a request, is that is that where you start from? And then you go from submit a request to something that says CCLIP called CCLIP Fix. So there's another internet link to get to get us to CCLIP Fix. And then you get to CCLIP Fix and says there are no requests matching your search. And then you have my request, and you click on my request, there's nothing there. So where do I, so somewhere along the line I have to put in a request. Whatever it is, I don't know if it's that easy. Maybe somebody somebody else has found it easier to use, but I.
If you, if you scroll down the page where it says submit the request, I guess we can down down below, there's links. If you want to report an abandoned vehicle, code enforcement, dead animal, drainage, flooding, graffiti, whatnot, you click on one of those links, and it'll take you to CCLIP Fix the website and.
Looking for her location at that point.
Correct. Let me see if I can share my screen so I could show you how that's done.
I I can see that. So if I have a specific thing, then I can click on it. If I just want to make a complaint about something, there should be another.
You do not have to download the app. You can actually just click on those categories, and then it will ping the appropriate staff member. It'll be assigned. So essentially, you don't have to go through the issue of downloading the app. You can report directly through our website.
So who who does this go to? So I say, and also, there's no other category. So I guess we maybe need to add that in, but that's a little bit. Is there a does it go to the right staff person? You've already set it up, so the email goes to them, or who does the email go to?
That is correct. So for instance, a public works request would first go to city engineer con. An abandoned vehicle request would go to the police department. They would be referred to the police department. A dead animal would be referred to the the animal control people. So those types of things get directly forwarded. But the ones that we handle internally go to us. For instance, you know, we have public records request on there. We're going to take that off, but that would go to Michelle Radcliffe. Traffic signal issue would come to Jessica Khan or street lamp issue, Jessica Khan. Trash or recycling would go to West Valley Collection Recycling. Vegetation removal would go directly to me. Graffiti would go to me. Illegal dumping goes to me.
Is it, is there a response? Is there a response that the user gets as to who the request has gone to? And when, when, when a follow back is expected?
There is a response that I have it in one of my slides. There there's an automatic response that comes from CCLIP Fix. The 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 beauty of doing this, you know, online is that in time, we can reduce the amount of trash between getting a hold of people at Montesereno, calling, calling our city hall, waiting for two and a half hours, two and a half days, a week to get a call back. This is instant, right? This is online. And if we do this properly, then in time, we won't have to have as many people trying to respond to our residents, because it's all done, you know, online. And this is what I'm looking for. You know, if we can get through the implementation phase, let's get through the implementation phase. Let's get it working, right? Let's spend the five thousand dollars or whatever it costs to get this application up and running. You can't pay the basic charge and just forget about it and say, oh, it doesn't work. Or I am going to go do this thing offline. Then we have wasted the first five thousand dollars.
All right.
I.
Let's, actually, Ms. Allard has had her hand up for a while.
Thank you. A couple of things. First of all, Ms. Radcliffe, on the website, under residents, where where it says submit a request, I I think it may be better to label that report an issue. Because when I went on to the website to look where I could report an issue, I I was thinking submitted request is something else. So I'm wondering if that would direct more traffic to CCLIP Fix and be much more clear.
I can work with the web with.
Either report an issue or report a problem, or most likely report an issue. And then the second question was, with respect to the city manager's license, couldn't the city manager, couldn't you change the title to be city manager slash city clerk as we had seen in the samples from other cities? Mold that into one, basically one position? That way you both is is would that give you both access or no?
Um, I don't believe so, because.
You'll need your own separate.
Yeah, I believe, because it it would filter directly to the city manager. It would need, it would need two, I guess, email addresses for each. Yeah.
Got it. Okay, okay. So so I have used CCLIP Fix. It it works great. I got an immediate response from the city engineer. And they did get, the the items did get repaired in a timely fashion. So I think it's a great idea, and it's, we've only had it for about six months. I think we need to give it a proper investment in time. So I I would be okay with the either the additional li- license. I'm not sure we need a unique QR code, but I do like the idea of at least having a much more clear icon on our website as well as potentially maybe posting that QR code right on our city hall window. So when people come visit city hall, they can see that. I don't know if it's already there. I I didn't see it when I was there yesterday. But anyway, those are my thoughts. So thank you.
Mekachak?
I submitted a request on the fifth of November. And if nothing has happened to it, there's a street sign at the corner of Pito Road and Oak Drive or whatever, it's it's right across from Austin Way, and you can't see the 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 stop sign. And I haven't gotten anything on that. And maybe I didn't enter it correctly in the app or something. But perhaps Ms. Radcliffe can go and navigate to on the screen and and identify where that location is and and why I can't see it and why it hasn't responded to.
And to address Councilmember Mekachak's question, normally, a request like that would go to myself and or engineer Jessica Khan. And I did not get pinged on that request. So it's possible that when you submitted it, something happened, and it didn't go through. And if, we can look for it on our end. But I have a feeling we will not locate it.
I have a quick, quick question regarding that specific. I'm looking at it right now on the app. Is that location in Los Gatos?
If you take a look at, click on the icon and see the photo, the photo shows that the sign is a Montesereno sign with the quail on it.
Oh, I, okay, I do see, I do see that. But it says on the actual app that it's Los Gatos, and I'm wondering if that's why.
And the app doesn't send correctly, because that address should be in the city of Montesereno.
It was, I would imagine it was the the location of the app, I guess. Yeah. But anyway, yeah, it says it's located in Los Gatos.
Yeah, so you, Mr. Mekachak, you may need to move the location further onto the other side of the street or something along those lines, or we may need to get CCLIP Fix to decode the boundary lines more correctly. I noticed when I was first submitting, the first time I attempted it, getting the location right was a little bit of a challenge until I got used to submitting on the app. So, but it sounds like that's a coding issue for the location, either that you chose or that CCLIP Fix saw what you chose as.
I'll follow up my issue applying the speed.
Sounds good. All right. We've got a hand up from our Zoom jockey. Let's, do we have a comment that we needed?
Yeah, this is Dave Keisum. So I was involved with this. And the Esri database that CCLIP Fix is pulling from at one point had every address in Montesereno as showing as Los Gatos. I know that they are working on that, but it is, I don't think it is a hundred percent resolved yet at this point.
All right, that may help with that mystery as well. But, Mr. Mekachak, if you could follow up with Mr. Keisum and Mr. Leonardis, we can improve the system that way. Mr. Alahi?
Have you taken public comments already on this subject? Or do we need to?
No, we haven't. So thanks for the reminder. Let's go ahead and do that before we come back and end up closing things out without that. So let's open this to public comment. If we have any members of the public wishing to speak, if so, please raise your hand to be recognized at this point. Seeing none, we will close public comment and bring this back to council for some further discussion and potential decisions about action items here. Mr. Alahi, did you have further?
Well, I I was ready to make a motion. I think Mr. Turner has done a lot of work on this, and I'd, I would like to see it go to the next step. So we have some issue on getting an extra license. It's another five thousand dollars. That's what we need to spend, and let's spend that. I would move to go ahead and get the extra license, have Mr. Radcliffe take over charge of the project and do, you know, whatever is necessary. And some of the things Mr. Turner has pointed out should be implemented. So we have a viable situation, and at least try it out for a year. And if at the end of the year, it looks like the people like phone calls are then going to the op app, then we can re- review it. But at this point, I would like to formalize it and put the money to make it, you know, so working in work in progress. We've already spent some money on it, so there's no sense in not going further with it. So that's, that's what I'd like to move, make a motion on.
I'll make the second.
All right, let's go ahead and have a vote.
Let me, sorry, motion by Mayor Potem Alahi with a second by Councilmember Turner. Councilmember Lawler?
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Mekachak? Councilmember Mekachak?
I'm thinking of the.
Okay, it's no problem.
Circle back.
Okay, Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Alahi?
Yes.
Mayor Luthold?
Yes.
And Councilmember Mekachak?
I.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, so moving now to committee and commission reports. Do we have, and and we can also, to the extent that that may inform, come up with council member comments or future agenda items, feel free. Ms. Turner?
Yes, I wanted to report that the last meeting, I asked the, I talked to the council about city's association, asking the city of Montesereno to pay for the the cost of the round table. The city's association voted on it. I was only the, I was the only dissenting vote. There was a bill of fifty thousand dollars for this year. And they decided to vote to divide it equally among all the, all the jurisdictions. And I said, we are the smallest jurisdiction, and yet we pay for the highest cost. I asked them to talk, to have our attorneys speak with the city's association attorney. I said, because one of the things that I would recommend to my council is is to drop out of Cities Association if we have to pay for the costs again year after year." So I had a discussion with Sir Joe. And if you want to add to that, Sir Joe, please do.
Yeah, I'm, you know, looking into sort of what the city's legal obligations might be to pay that assessment, you know, from the Cities Association. And I have a phone conference set up with Cities Association's counsel and executive director for later this week.
Okay, sounds like that may need to come back to us as at least a small agenda item at the next meeting, if it's something that we all need to talk about. All right, anything further, Ms. Turner? And you're on mute, but that's a no. Okay, thank you. Anyone else for committee and commission reports? Seeing none. Yes, Mr. Eli.
Use my physical hand or my digital hand? So, sorry about that. Just to give you a report on what Silicon Valley Clean Energy has been up to. They are coming up with a program where people who aren't able to pay their bills, they will provide them an opportunity to, you know, additional time to pay it. Almost through March 22, they have a special program to help those who can't pay their electric bills paid. And as we see, provides almost all the electricity for most residences in Monte Sereno. It's 90, 95% of it. They're also still, continue to express concern about the carbon emissions that are out there. And there's going to be a focus on having, providing multifamily EV charging and coming up with the new reach codes and providing financing for those who can switch to carbon-free electricity. They're also trying to come up with a program, and this would be something that people, you know, our citizens might benefit from, which is to give away 50 portable electric batteries to qualified medical baseline customers to provide backup power in case of outages. And, you know, these are devices that could save lives if you lose power. And, oh, one other thing is for our students, they have a scholarship program, 2021 Empower SB, where they'll be giving scholarships to students. And applications can be submitted beginning in January 22 at sbcleanenergy.org/education. Maybe we should advertise that. So then others, I'll try to send you the blurb on this thing. But so that our youth can also benefit from applying for scholarships. That's all I have. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Anyone else? Committee, commission reports? Seeing none, let's go ahead and move to council member comments. Any council member comments at this point, before we get to the city manager report, and then future agenda items? Mr. Mecha-check?
Yes, I thought Councilmember Turner had her hand up, so I didn't say anything. But I wanted to give a brief update on the annex and what the Ad hoc Finance Committee is continuing to do. I set up a meeting with both Valley Water and Silicon Valley Clean Energy to have their representatives come out and take a look at the facility. And Mr. Leon Artis gave a great overview. And what we're, what they're going to be doing is coming back with what some recommendations could be to showcase different elements of what the building has that reduce the amount of water and reduce the amount of electricity. So we don't have a solution yet, but I did want council to know that is moving forward. And Mr. Leon Artis has been super helpful with that. The next item that I wanted to report on is San Jose Water Company and their general rate case that's in front of the California Public Utilities Commission. And there will be evidentiary hearings scheduled for the first week in December. And I will be a witness at that. And there's another element to to water rates. One element is the general rate case. And then the second element is the cost of capital. And just today, the administrative law judge accepted a motion to have me be the contact person for an organization called W R A T E S. So I will be working on the cost of capital. And that is a significant achievement so far. And also should be able to help with our, with our water rates. And then the final comment that I'd like to say is, San Jose Water Company issued what's called a advice letter. And they, I'm sure everyone has received a letter from San Jose Water, but they may be enacting very punitive rates if you exceed an average amount of water usage from 2019. So I just wanted to give a brief update on those activities to council.
Yes, and thank you for following that and for your activism on it. Okay, any other council member comments at this point? No? City manager report then.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, if you don't mind, I wanted to comment, come in, Brian, for all the work he's done with the Silicon Valley Clean Energy people, dragging them down there to take a look at the building. And our hope is we can get some, get them to pitch in on some of those costs. So good job, man. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Leon Artis.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to bring to the public's attention this evening, we are recruiting for our site and architectural commissioners. The application deadline is November 30, 2021, at 5:00 PM. And we will be appointing the new site and our commissioners at our December 7 meeting. And this application is accessible through our website. We have put notice out to the public. But just wanted to highlight it for the council this evening that we are openly recruiting for Site-Narc.
All right, thank you. All right, moving now to future agenda items. The first one that I want to jump right in on is objective standards and making sure that city staff is, number one, working on this, has all of the support they need, and that we schedule accordingly to make sure that we are getting enough meetings in. My understanding from the communications from Mr. Rudin were that we're ultimately, if we're going to adopt objective standards, we're going to need a first reading and a second reading. Those have to occur at regularly scheduled meetings, not special meetings. So, Mr. Rudin, correct me if I'm wrong, but if that's the case, it seems like we're adding back the December 21st meeting so that we have a second meeting in December. But that would mean that we would need to do a first reading at December 7, if we're going to have this objective standards adopted before, at least the first meeting in January. So that would mean that site and architecture needs to move quickly. And we may need to have a special meeting in advance of December 7, if our input's going to be an important part of this process of choosing what the objective standards ordinance should look like. Otherwise, it looks like we wouldn't have the option to adopt until second reading in the first meeting in January. Mr. Rudin, am I correct on those timelines and those issues?
Yes, that would be the case if the city was going to adopt its SB9 regulations, you know, pursuant to a regular ordinance rather than urgency ordinance. And that would also be the case if the city was going to object, adopt its objective standards by ordinance rather than by appending them to the city's existing design guidelines. You know, having reviewed sort of the drafts that have been prepared by the consultant and worked with the planner, I don't see any reason that the city's, you know, additional objective design criteria can't be appended to the city's existing design guidelines and adopted by resolution. You know, we already have ordinances in place that require compliance with the city's design guidelines for site development permits. And then additionally, we can, you know, ensure that the SB9 ordinance comes before the council, you know, in advance of the January 1 effective date of SB9. Now, with respect to, you know, the adoption of a regular ordinance, they don't go into effect until 30 days after the second reading. And so that would be one very good reason to do the SB9 ordinance as an urgency ordinance, since it can go into effect immediately. So I think the staff plan at this point, given the time needed to prepare the ordinance, which is not ready, you know, for consideration by any of the public bodies, is going to be, you know, we're working on the timeframe of urgency ordinance, which is a path that other jurisdictions have, you know, followed. That being said, adopting an urgency ordinance requires, you know, fourth, fifth of the council to pass. So that is something to keep in mind as well.
So does the urgency ordinance require a second reading, or cannot be done in a single meeting?
That can be adopted in a single meeting. A number of jurisdictions do. You know, because an urgency ordinance requires that it be adopted in response to an urgent public health or safety need, a lot of cities will, when they adopt urgency ordinances, also adopt those same regulations by a regular ordinance. So they'll adopt the urgency ordinance, and then they'll also adopt a regular ordinance, which will be in place, you know, in case anybody challenges whether there was a proper, you know, finding of urgency to pass the urgency ordinance. So sometimes you may adopt the same regulations twice.
Okay, and you mentioned another possible route, which would be simply amending our design guidelines to cover some of the objective standards. Would something as detailed and specific as, for example, limiting lot split, post-lot split to 2,800 square foot units, be something that could be into the design guidelines? Or would that level of detail, like the lot split, building size limitations, need to go into an ordinance?
No, that would, that would need to go into an ordinance. And just for clarity, we are talking about two separate agenda items here. One agenda item is going to be enacting of objective standard generally, based on the efforts of the consultant, the planner, in preparing those, which could be put into the city's design guidelines. And then the second is an ordinance to address the requirements of SB9. So those are two agenda items. They're related, but they are sufficiently distinct.
Okay, thank you. And I certainly wanted to suggest, at least on my own behalf, and probably with affirmative nods from council, given the urgency of all of this, that I would make myself available and suggest that we have any special meetings we need to move this forward. If joint session, study session with site and architecture would speed things up and help staff so that council is up to speed, and we're not having to, maybe not reinvent the wheel, but inherit the wheel, and then begin offering input after site and architecture is done. Just look at whatever's going to be most efficient, and I'll work to make the council available. Or if I'm no longer mayor after December 7, I assume next mayor will make the council available as needed to close this out. So those are my comments on future agenda items. Do other people have other future agenda items? Mr. Mecha-check?
I wanted to follow on to the discussion that we just had. And I'd like to say that if we do the first alternative that Mr. Rudin was describing, in parallel, we do the first and second redate, and it takes effect 30 days later, I think that would be a good thing. I believe that missing the opportunity or getting caught on a technicality for SB9 should be avoided at all costs. We need to make sure to be, are prepared for that. And I know that, I believe it's the city of Cupertino, they've been going down this path for a little while. And are we leveraging to the maximum extent possible the work that they've done? That's kind of the question. But I will make myself available for whatever meetings are required between now and the end of the year to make sure that this happens. So you can count me in.
Yeah, thank you. And I do think, I mean, I want to underline this again, and what you just said as well. We don't want even a day, or two, or three, where someone might be submitting over the counter on January 2, 3, or 4, before our first meeting in January. We really need to hit it with urgency legislation if we're going to do something that will deal with the SB9 issues by the December 21 meeting, so that, so that we don't have any break that someone might try to take advantage of with us not having those regulations in place. So let's make sure we get that done and done in a timely manner. In terms of the comment, just briefly on what you mentioned about leveraging other jurisdictions, certainly, staff, please use all of your resources to reach out. We will have the West Valley Mayor's and Managers meeting tomorrow. And I will check in with the other mayors and managers, and Mr. Leon Artis will as well, to make sure that we've, we're seeing what they're doing and that everybody is leveraging that. Okay, Mr. Eli.
Yeah, no, thank you. Thank you for staying on top of this, because this is critical. And, yeah, we do have separate issues, but the objective standards needs to be, need to be really clarified. And if an ordinance is necessary, that be adopted. The 800-feet requirement, I think, follows from the objective standards. If you have them, then we can limit the construction to the 800 feet. If you don't have objective standards, then we can't limit it. So it's really critical to get those done.
Ms. Perkins?
Hello, good evening. So we have been working quite a bit with other jurisdictions. There are several working groups that have been sharing information and different ideas that, of how everybody's proceeding with SB9. The schedule before the end of the year obviously is pretty tight, particularly with the holidays next week. But if there is a time early next week that the council is available, we could certainly schedule a special meeting. We can provide some background on the SB9 legislation and receive feedback before we finalize the ordinances.
Great, thank you. And again, just questioning, questioning out loud, should site and architecture be involved? Can we essentially have a special meeting, working session, where you don't have to repeat yourself too many times and can bring both groups up to speed at the same time? Possibly next week. Otherwise, I guess it would be at the very beginning of the return after the Thanksgiving break. So, Mr. Rudin, is that something that we can call a special meeting that involves both site and architecture and city council whenever, whenever city staff feels it would be appropriate to give us their initial report and update?
Yes.
Okay, great. So we'll make ourselves available as needed on that. Mr. Eli, your hands up again.
Yeah, and also, I guess you've got the background, and kind of the background on SB9 and 10. What we're really looking for from staff is objective standards that fit into it. So rather than hashing over what SB9 and 10 mean, but 10 doesn't mean anything, it looks like, but SB9 would, how it would affect us. If you can use that as a framework, would actually come up and say, "Here's an objective standard that applies," and just give us those standards that we need to discuss.
Right, and it's really two parts. It's objective standards and its SB9 legislation or ordinances. I guess they are two different things, as has been pointed out, and said. And a lot of work for staff, and we really appreciate what's going on in the urgency and what Mr. Cortese's office has dumped. Um, and, and a lot of work for staff and we really appreciate now what's going on in the urgency and uh what Mr. Cortese's office has dumped in our laps. Um, and again, he uh did offer that from uh the uh Sacramento point of view, they would um offer help. Um, I suggest that we continue to reach out to his office and at least express our discontent over the fact that they've dumped this in our laps and they're not offering help and he still doesn't understand the law he passed. So uh, we're, it's a lot of work and I appreciate what everybody's doing to deal with.
Yeah, the law, the law specifically says, says that they don't need to reimburse for any cost that incurred because of this, so.
Right, right. And, and they don't need to understand what they passed either, apparently, uh, according to Mr. Cortese. So, Mr. M- Mr. Mekachuk, I'll come to you in a second, Mr. Turner.
Can I say something as well?
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Turner.
Yeah, so the Cali group was the group that shared with us the resolution on SB nine, SB ten as well as the local control. They're also drafting with, with the Sky Group a um objective standards that we can all use. So I would suggest that Diana, I, I can give you the contact name of the person there and you, and, and they are willing to share with us their objective standards and they have a big staff. So we can, we can use whatever we, we need from them. I'll send you the information.
All right, sounds good. Um, and Mr. Mekachuk.
I was going to say that if you, if there's a need to have a meeting on objective standards next week, I would be available or on Monday and Tuesday. I would prefer not to be available on Wednesday.
Sounds good. I think that's uh Thanksgiving week already, so Wednesday, people should be planning appropriately that uh Wednesday is getaway day for a lot of people. Um, okay, and, and otherwise immediately after we return from the holiday. Um, and actually, um, if um Ms. Turner, if uh, if it's appropriate uh for staff then to redistribute to us um some of those links, that would be great. Um, obviously, we don't want any Brown Act violations. Um, but um if staff wants to share with us any samples of any information in advance of our meetings so that we understand what's going on uh inversion in either a staff report or links to information that will be helpful for us all to understand and be up to speed, uh, please feel free to uh work with Mr. Ridden to distribute appropriately.
Yes, I also posted some, some uh, some things, some information in SB nine and then uh on, on the next door website. So I don't know if you guys have seen that, completely drawings.
Okay, sounds good. Um, all right, any other future agenda items we need to cover tonight? Sounds like we're all on board for dealing with the SB nine and objective standards issue as we run into December uh and probably don't need any more distractions. I'm sure staff's going to be very busy with this, so. Um, appreciate everybody's input and support. Uh, let us know how we can help and support. And uh, that's it for tonight. So uh with that, nothing further. I will now adjourn the meeting and uh see you all either in a special meeting or on December seventh.
All right, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Bye.